Literacy Coordinator, .2 FTE, a discussion and a vote on that. And that we do have 7.1.3, which would be a triple E hire. That's they'd like to be able to offer the position and get approval on that. So, and actually, I'll hand this out when we get to that piece. Anything else, Megan, or Patty, or Alan, that I'm that I'm missing there?
Those were two of them.
That's all I had.
Okay. And then did want to add also 10.0 as a possible executive session if we need that to discuss personnel matters. It kind of depends on the level of specificity that you guys require for the things we're going to vote on in action matters. And so that would make it adjournment 11.0. So, 3.0 is Audience and Communications. We have none 4.0. We will not be doing a presentation tonight. We had, as we were discussing before the camera went on, several items on here for reports to the board and discussion matters that we thought would, you know, be fairly robust discussions tonight so that we were passing on the presentation. So, that takes us to Reports to the Board. First is 5.1, the Principal's Report.
So, anybody need a copy? I brought some copies.
Yep, got mine.
I am also.
Can you move up?
Got it here. You got it there.
Okay. So, just wanted to highlight that we did have several members of our school community recognized for the Oshucks Award with CY. So, just if you've ever, if you've never had the chance to come attend that evening, it really is powerful. Just kind of an evening held here at CVU, there's a dinner, and these folks are nominated for their ability to, basically for their volunteerism throughout all the CVU, all the CSSU communities. And the shout outs go out to Michaela Ryan, who may know as the Director of New Village Farm, who works directly with us for our composting program. And also, we send our eighth graders there as part of their community service program. Kathy Tannen for, you're sitting there and listening. I knew Kathy through the schools of parents and also through our composting program. And then you hear about all the other wonderful things she's involved in. And then Andy McClellan, whose wife Alice, you probably know, but Andy's also fundamental, just came from, if you go and watch Shelburne Lacrosse, which has grown from a small little group of, I think, two dozen kids to it's well over several hundred kids involved, all under kind of his vision and tutelage, so.
That's amazing, because when my kids were in it, there was one year where we had to group together with Heinsberg, because neither had enough to field a team, so that's amazing.
Yeah. And now, now the conflict is, do we have enough kids to fund this dynamic program and still keep baseball viable? They're not competing with each other, which is not absolutely, so.
Wow. So, we had a great kindergarten registration, as you can see there, eighty-four incoming kindergarten students, as you well know. We talked about that beforehand.
And if I may add, eighty-five as of today.
Oh, very good. Sorry about that, sorry. And obviously, you've had a lot of conversation about that, hence why we're going to hire another kindergarten teacher. But I did want to thank everybody who participated in that. Vicky Weidman did a great job organizing everything. And our kindergarten teachers, Jethlyn James was sick on one of the days. And just to let people know, it's the first time he's actually taken a sick day in eight years. And it happened to be on kindergarten registration, so he was really, really upset over it, but.
And really sick.
Deb Kille, exactly. Deb Kelly fell and, or took his place, so she did a great job. So, yeah, so we're so excited to have that great group of graduates of the year 2026.
My gosh.
Hard to believe.
Did, how did the, when you told them there are eighty-four kindergarteners, how did they, how did they react? Was there any reaction? Did they?
It was kind of funny, because that was the day before I had requested a new hire for a teacher. And so, I couldn't say anything, and so, there were some nervous people. But after that, I just put something out to everybody, and they were all happy.
Yeah, class size is twenty-one, it'll be fine.
Twenty-one, no problem. So, they're all, they're all good, everything was good. I kept saying, I'm going to the school board, you know, everything will be fine, so.
Good.
So, continue to move forward on the Part Two After School Program. Big conversations around the organization of that. Williston has hopped on board, so I think there was some conversation at the CSSU level around that. Just continue to move forward, and it's been nothing but positive over the last month. I don't know what feedback you've had, but I think there's a good buzz around the change. We had our PTO Spring Grant, so kind of shout out to that group for over $5,000 that they fundraised and donated. And if you look at some of the things that they're purchasing, they're really allowing us to take some risks, stretch some corners, you know, expand our opportunities for our kids, so it's.
Nice going, Dave.
It's the greatest, it's the second greatest day in PTO for the whole year.
That's great.
Craft Fair Christmas stuff.
Christmas shopping.
Yeah.
What I do is yesterday's PTO Teacher Appreciation Luncheon.
That's right. Which was unbelievable.
But yeah, I convinced my wife to go to the Spring Grant meeting, because I couldn't go.
Yep, she did a great job representing you.
You're gonna love it, and she did, because it's good to hear what people want and what, how things work to get stuff done.
That's great. So, we held our first and second grade concert a couple of weeks ago. It was unbelievable. We actually.
It was standing room only.
We, we actually had five hundred people at that concert, believe it or not, in attendance at the concert. It was really, really crazy.
Yeah. That's a hundred and eighty kids.
Hundred and eighty kids, and it was just unbelievable. So, our kudos to Diana Burritt, she does such a fabulous job. And Bob Miller, one of our custodians, our night custodian, who always helps out with everything, said that he had never seen such an organized event with five hundred people involved in all the time he's been at Shelburne Community School. So, I'm not sure how long that's been, but it sounds like he's been there for quite some time. So, he was pretty, pretty happy with it, but it was a great performance. Oh, sure. And we thank our PTO for another wonderful round of John Gilmour. It was actually our PTO, as well as our Arts Integration Group, that put money into that. And each one of our fifth grade classes wrote and they composed a song and then sang the song for, for the group on Thursday night that week. That was the culminating activity, and the songs were quite wonderful. So, so we really enjoyed that evening.
Yep, and we just wrapped up with our eight student interns, six from UVM, two from Champlain, another great group of young people. And I think it's a great feeder program. Some of our current staff kind of came to us, were introduced, a lot of our parents come into it, really well worth the investment of time, and our teachers do a great job mentoring those young people, so. Safety Committee, in terms of those notes, just.
See, I just want to ask you a question, just out of curiosity. Do the schools compensate us at all for this? Or is it just a totally voluntary, where, you know, we, you know, we'd like to do this, and they need schools to do this? I'm just curious.
There's, there's no compensation.
And I'm not asking for any, I'm just curious what, you know, how, what the arrangement is. It's just, we like it, they like it.
Yep.
So, you don't pay them, and they don't pay you?
Right.
Okay.
They're paying UVM and Champlain, but.
And we do get some benefits, I mean, I have to say.
Oh, yeah, I have no, I have no issue whatsoever with doing it, I was just curious.
Just curious if there's finances involved. So, school safety, if you happen to be anywhere in the vicinity of the school at any time that there's announcements now, you'll discover that we have added an outside loudspeaker system.
I'm surprised Davis Park hasn't called the police on us.
As long as you only do it within certain hours.
If you'd like us to wake up your children.
It's really, you know, the pledge of allegiance, that disaster do, you know, all the announcements.
All that comes across right now. We haven't isolated it, because if you really want it, in the event of emergency, the last thing we want is to have, get a page and not be able to communicate. So, our most recent test was, we tested it in a severe weather drill, just kind of simulating how could we get two hundred and sixty middle school students off the playground and into the gym, and it took a minute and ten seconds. Organized in the gym, seated around the.
Isn't that great? It was really.
Get that video.
Yeah, because it was a one-time occurrence, yeah.
It was really good, it was really efficient.
And that, you know, I hear you guys, when I walk away from the building in the morning, I hear you start the pledge. And I can't hear it by the intersection of Davis.
Okay, so stop pushing down that way.
You don't stop and pledge.
Don't hear the birthday.
I.
He's marching.
Let me, let me rephrase, let me rephrase that, as I hear the beginning of the announcements.
As you stop and pledge.
That's what I asked.
Then you leave.
Right after I've run out of the school, so I missed the pledge.
So, we had a very successful AYP Program Council Retreat. As you know, we're actively engaged in creating a school improvement plan through our AYP resources. And our Program Council is instrumental in helping us to tailor that program really to our needs. We did actually create three goals, a goal around parent involvement, a goal around creating multi-tiered systems of support through the creation of some student support teams and instructional teams, and a goal of reformatting our Leadership or Governments Group, which is what we are now calling our Program Council. So, we called it a Leadership Council for a while, so just to let you know, when you hear about a Program Council, that's what that is.
And when we get to the action items later, one of the, one of the reasons we think we'll probably be coming to someone on the board to ask for some hiring or some shifting is, we're looking at reallocating some of our Medicaid money, because some of this additional work is, is going to take a level of organization and supervision that we haven't had in the structures. So, that's just part of the piece, as we look at that, is how we're going to achieve these goals that we're telling the state we're going to be doing, and they're going to be checking up on us to say, is it really happening? The other two pieces, professional development, we do our On Demand Collaborative Scoring, that's one of our cross-system assessments. Completed that, that is done at each grade level, and it's teams of teachers sitting down and studying their students' work and talking about how can we integrate that into our learning, what can we learn from looking at every fourth grader's piece of writing and scoring. And then Math Best Practice has also been wrapped up.
So, I did want to ask also, I know, Russ, you had asked for an update on hiring, and I have that, but unfortunately, we didn't put it on here because I couldn't just think of it. Didn't know if you wanted to see it, do you want to?
If you've got something, you can hand around, try to hear.
Is that okay?
Any questions on enrollment as we're passing this around, because that's kind of the final piece of that report?
Yep.
Those are very solid numbers in terms of the 2013 enrollment down at the bottom. So, we're kind of calculating, you know, as, as families tell us they're moving away in the summer, as we get the enrollments, we're trying to keep it very constant, kind of keep you in the know, because there's definitely some bubbles that you may be hearing about. Probably the most substantial bubbles are at second grade and at sixth grade. And we had our fifth grade orientation just last week on Thursday, and it was a topic of conversation. Are we really going to have class sizes of twenty-six and twenty-seven potentially in the middle school? And the answer was yes, and we've known that's coming. We're prepared for it, we feel that it's very doable, we've got great groups of teachers. And I'd say, in summary, Tim, you kind of navigated it.
So, you're saying the bubbles are which, second and sixth?
Second, so those class sizes are looking at class sizes of twenty-three.
That's for next year, don't they?
For next year, and then sixth grade, twenty-five, twenty-six right now. The twenty-five, twenty-six, one statement I made is, you know, we studied the middle school enrollment over the last five years, and we have not had a class that grows from sixth to eighth grade, it just doesn't happen. We tend to see if anything flat, but more likely is actually some kids moving out, which makes sense. If you're moving with your family and you've got a middle school, you kind of get them into that sixth grade mode. You don't want to uproot your seventh and eighth grader unless you absolutely have to. So, you see those kind of changes there.
So, where does this, where do these ten people come from? Or, no, I'm looking at the wrong year. So, it's really only an increase of two people for second grade.
For second grade.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, you have to go from first to second, right, as you look down on the.
And of course, this is only what we know today.
Right.
You know, and all this is, you know, subject to change, both plus and minus. I was, I ran into Tim Podvar, who's on the Select Board, actually, I think it's, he's their chair at a CVU Girls Lacrosse game last week. And, you know, he was talking about the development in town, seeing, you know, how many people may be moving into houses in the next, you know, four to six months that are going to be showing up over the summer.
Do the Bill Smith projections still show a decline?
Still do.
I don't know when the last new ones are that we have, and it's something that we ought to.
Because insofar as we're doing facilities planning, we, you know, the revised projection might be warranted for.
Yeah, and he's still tracking, his primary is birth, and the.
Or just demographics.
The local demographic's birth rate, that's still showing a decline, but.
Yeah, and I, and I think he has tried to take into account housing starts and things like that in the, in the past, but it's obviously inexact science and.
Yeah, it's just not organic growth within children, it's all people moving in, you know.
Yeah, and then, and there's, there's no senses of, you know, how many senior citizens and, and, you know, what, what number of people are starting, you know, how are neighborhoods turning over? You know, how, how many, you know, empty nesters are moving out and families moving in? I don't know that there's any way to gauge that, but.
I also think that a lot of those homes, as they move out, they have renters come in, because we have a lot of folks who come and say that they're renting houses that, you know, older people might have gone to whatever, nursing homes, whatever, but they haven't sold their homes. So, a younger family is actually renting the house for a year or whatnot, so. I've had two or three old people tell me.
By, you know, reading, you're reading the paper, which obviously don't believe everything you read in the free press. Ooh, did I say that in public? That, you know, the housing market is, you know, it's, it's doing reasonably well right now, and supply is tight. So, that, you know, I'm not sure that prices are really moving up strongly, but certainly, supply is relatively tight, so. If people are holding on to their houses, I wouldn't think it's because they, they can't sell them. It may be that they still can't sell them for a price they want to get. But from what I understand, how's it should be, how's it should be moving if you, if you want to sell it? Not, you know, not like three, four years ago, when you probably couldn't sell it regardless of what you wanted to sell it for, so. So, you've got, these are the positions that we are attempting to hire.
Correct.
Or that we are in the process of. So, the first one, the triple E, that's the one that we're gonna, we're gonna vote on tonight. Literacy Coordinator and Director of Student Services were two that we wanted to talk about tonight. And then the other three, I guess you're still working on.
Yep, you can see the stats of those right there, so just for your information.
Organizational Meeting Means.
Thank you for asking, I'm sorry. It's basically just the team who's going to be doing the interviewing gets together, and they actually go through the whole process. Some of the members have not been on a hiring committee before, so just the process and what the task is that they have.
So, are these posted now?
Yes, oh, yes, yes, uh-huh.
Refresh my memory, what's the K-5 teacher?
Sharon White is leaving, she's a current fourth grade teacher, and so we'll need to fill her, I'm sorry.
Was she the one who I think was moving out of state or something, or why is Sharon?
I don't believe so. She was looking for some other opportunity. She, for a few years, and now I'm talking, I don't know everything, but what did she do?
She was in our enrichment coordinator for.
The one year we had.
For one year, then she moved on and did a, did a similar roll down in Bristol for a couple of years. Had a leave of absence, and then came back to us for this year.
And I believe she's going to do something similar to that next year.
So, that would leave the fourth grade with one less teacher?
Right now, correct, yep.
Is this a looping, two-year looping position?
It is, it won't be, but it is, yes, it is.
Teacher we'd be hiring would, next, the year after, would be teaching fifth grade?
So, there's some movement in third, fourth, and fifth grade potentially this year. And when I say movement, I mean in-house, some shifting of positions. So, I would not want to answer yes to that, because we don't know a hundred percent until things happen tonight, what the configuration, or, I mean, the teacher, excuse me, the teacher assignments will look like for next year. I can better tell you in about a week, so.
And, and I'm going to guess that, you know, there, there are going to be times, whether it's somebody leaving, like, you know, that, whether it's somebody leaving like this, or even people just moving around within the elementary school, that, you know, the looping doesn't guarantee that your kid's going to have the same teacher for two years. There will be circumstances where it's not going to happen, arguably, to still benefit to the kids to all being together. You may not have the same teacher all the time.
But unfortunately, that group, I just want to remind you that that fourth grade group currently has three classes. And next year, they will have four classes of fifth grade.
This is the famous fourth grade.
This is the famous group. So, because of that, when we talk about looping, all students will not be guaranteed any kind of looping next year, because we have to go through that cycle until we can actually get to that point. So, thank you, Bob, for bringing that up. Just want to remind the public that that, that's, no, I'm teasing.
But Sharon's not leaving till the end of the year.
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is CSSU Debrief. Really, I think that the two biggest things there, I guess legislative update, there really wasn't a whole heck of a lot. In the legislative update, we did talk a little bit about the breakfast, some of us were, were there. And I guess the representatives who are, who were there do appreciate that and did recommend, I guess, that we try to hold it earlier in the, in the legislative cycle next year. So, I'm not sure why we moved it back this year, it might have just been a scheduling thing, but.
And perhaps to a different location, so another senator might be able to join us also.
Okay.
Yep.
Missed that piece. Next is our third quarter, and, well, I guess the other piece from CSSU, I think you guys were all, everybody was there for the common topic, so. Which, Megan, thank you for presenting. So, next is the Third Quarter Financial Management Report. And the good news there is that we are projecting currently to be $32,000 under budget. Revenues are forecast to be $6,000, or we call it $6,700 under budget. Before the application of the $90,000 in fund balance that was approved a year ago, so that we would be projecting a surplus of $125,000 at, at the end of this year. One tidbit, though, from the CSSU meeting, there were two items in that budget that are running in the red that may see, you know, those shortfalls allocated back out to the member districts. So, in total, and, and we were asked, please don't hold them to these numbers, especially the transportation number is a little fluid at the moment. But they totaled roughly $100,000, so arguably, we could be looking at fifteen to twenty-five grand, depending on how they're allocated. That would be, you know, allocated back against that surplus, but I would assume that unless something drastic happens between now and the end of the year, that we're looking at it being $100,000 to the good on, on the budget for the year. So, thank you guys for your hard work on that, we usually do very well with that, so. And Food Service expects to end the year a bit better than budget as well. So, again, I think that's really a credit to Becky, because we did typically run in the red on that, and we're usually having to make that up at, at the end of the year, so. And I think a lot of the, or several of the K-8 districts continue to run the red on theirs. And, and, you know, it's, it's much harder in a smaller, in a smaller school. You know, there's some economies of scale that we're able to benefit from, so. Next is 5.4 Facilities Committee Update, so who's going to do that for us?
I can do that. We met over in Heinsberg, and we had a tour of their building to see the.
Say, why, why are you?
Well, because we wanted to see what they had done, because they had a similar situation where they had had the, essentially, more or less an open plan with the corridors and the, and the classrooms, and they changed that. And that was with the help of Truex Cullen and David Epstein. And David Epstein joined us at the beginning of the meeting and gave us a very good update on what had happened in the past and what things, what the situation looked like now with the whole report. And also gave us some, a sense of some presentations that he could make to us about twentieth century, changes in twentieth century education, which also might help to influence some decisions that we might want to make about the building and education for the future. So, we had a very, very productive meeting there, and have I left anything out, Tim, or Alan, with that?
No, I think, just to inform the board that going forward, the next steps is, David Kelly, Patty and I, and David Epstein are going to meet and go through the work that was done in 2007 and 2008 around both the facility and the educational specs, because some pretty comprehensive documents, looking at what does the building need long-term? And then, in terms of the educational program, what were some issues that the committee had decided to address back in 2008? And then looking and saying, are those relevant now, are those priorities now? So, that work's happening over the next month before we come back together in June.
I have asked David for a proposal and a budget for his consulting services, because the first meeting with us was pro bono, but going forward, and we're very eager to have him join us, but we need to know what those numbers are.
Yeah, I mean, David's got a good history with the school.
Absolutely.
And knows, knows a lot of what we've done in the past and looked at in the past.
Yep.
Question I have is, have, have you guys established some sort of timeline? Or is that maybe what David, we, we are going to hope David does, that says, okay, you know, and, you know, working back from when we expect to have a bond vote, you know, here are critical dates to accomplish certain things.
I, I think that's part of the work that we're going to be doing. That's a critical part of the work that we're going to be doing. We're all talking about that, the bond, and how this could fit into that whole bond issue and what it would look like.
The other question I have about, about David and Truex Cullen, again, I, I certainly would support using them, but what are the, you know, and some, I should know, what are the thresholds where something has to be competitively bid versus our ability to just select a, a vendor to?
Fifteen thousand is the number.
Where it has to be competitively bid?
Yes.
So, we're way over that?
Well, I don't know.
For his service.
For his services, not necessarily.
Right. All I'm talking about is, is his consulting, his consulting piece of it. He may want to be at $14,999, if that's.
That's a good point.
You know, what, you know, again, if, if we want to select him, we need to be aware of what has to happen with, with competitive bidding versus just being able to.
So, I think we, we need to encourage him strongly to get that bid to us as soon as possible.
Well, yeah, and, you know, need to, to talk with Bob Mason about it, probably just to, you know, make sure that, that we, we cover our bases there. And, and, you know, we, we don't, we don't want to, we don't want to game the system either, where you could say, well, you know, he'll do this piece of it for $5,000, and that's a separate, and he'll do this piece for $7,000, and this piece for $8,000, and it all adds up to whatever that adds up to, twenty, that, you know, kind of skirts.
What was the Heinsberg experience?
Well, I mean, I think there's a couple pieces to the project, and, I mean, the, the first piece is to kind of get down to really what you want and really what you need, and that's probably the, no question, the lesser expensive part of it.
Yeah.
And then the next thing is, you know, going to construction drawings and, you know, bid packages and things like that. So, I think right now, we're really just focused on that first piece.
I absolutely get that and, and understand that, but if David comes back with a $16,000 consulting package.
We can't do, we got it.
We've got an issue.
Yep.
I, I did ask Bob, whatever his last name is. I, I did ask, um, Bob, whatever his last name is, at, at Heinsberg, the principal?
Goodra.
Goodra.
Goodra, thank you. How the community had received that project, and what their support was like, and if they had any issues, if they've had any problems since, and everything was absolutely clean, and the community was very, very much in favor of it, and, uh, strong response to everything, so, it was a handsome, it was a handsome project.
I mean, I think the other thing to recognize too, and we talked about this, you know, the amount that's coming off the bond is about two million dollars.
Yeah.
And, you know, the, the thing we discussed also is two million doesn't go a long way, and now is the opportunity to, if there are things that are beyond that two million, to do it now, because if you take four million and run it out over a twenty-year term, it's not a big number. So, it's, now's the time to, you know, if you look at the roof, the windows, the HVAC, you know, just the, kinda the deferred maintenance portion of the project will probably burn a good share of that money.
No, we, we, we don't wanna, from the get-go, limit it at two million dollars and say, that's all we're gonna consider, uh, I'm, I'm sure that it will be priced in a way that we can pick and choose pieces of it. There, there's been a lot of talk about, you mentioned HVAC, the, um, the calendar two point oh, and what does that mean for air conditioning in the schools?
Exactly. Yep.
So, uh, yeah, I don't know.
Just like a day like yesterday, when it reached ninety.
Is it, um, is it baseboard, I mean, it's radiators in the, for the heat, isn't it? It's not hot air.
The new wing is radiators, the old wing is actually air handlers that try to push the heat down from the top, incredibly inefficient.
Yeah, which is kinda fighting-
Yeah.
-natural law, or whatever, it's not probably a physics that governs that.
It's a really nice warm place up top.
Tall people are okay, little kids-
Still a lot of loss.
Our each ones are really happy.
Um, any other questions for anybody who's on the facilities committee? Uh, next, a playground update, uh, you wanna tell us where things-
Sure, so I can give you, give you some update on that, after our last conversation, I went back to David Kelly, and the first question was, so, again, it's, we're, we're not gonna, we're not just gonna be funding this outright, it's not gonna happen in short term, so what are our possibilities? He's, he's confident that the rot, rot that we have, the breakdown of material, it's, it's approaching what the specs say could, could be considered a potential hazard, specifically only on some non-structural beams. The piece he's really concerned about is the long slide, so he says, if, he says, I can keep this operational through next summer, uh, through the next school year, but as pieces become unsafe, we'll just be closing them, we'll just be removing them, and that, that large slide is probably the biggest piece he's concerned along, along with the tire swings. So, you know, in, in response to, can he, can he keep it running, can he repair it, can he do that, the answer was, yes, I can do that. Asked him about the idea of, can we do this in stages, can this be kinda phased in? His response was, he doesn't see that as being a viable option, because by the time you dig up one part, you might as well have been digging up the entire part, 'cause you're, you're, you're gonna have to be digging all the underlayer and laying some foundational concrete posts and things like that, and it's just not gonna be efficient to do that. So, the pieces it could see would be, there's kinda two separate boxes there, there's a, a tire swing and a metal swing box. If the tire swing goes, we probably could replace that, because that's its own little area, but the majority of the structure, which is really the meat of it, that, that's gonna be a one-time replacement. Had a morning meeting with Joan Lenis, and she kinda gave me the history and is digging in her attic, where she says she has a box of all the records. She says, I would be happy to advise you, do I want to leave this, do I want to be your go-to person, not at all interested, thank you very much. But she would really serve as our liaison to kind of some of the past folks and, and be the link that way if we were interested. So, that, that's kind of where it's gotten to, and it's honestly said at that point up till now. I mean, I, I guess as I think about it, my concern, Patty and I have talked about this, you know, you've heard me talk about capacity and things like that, as, as I look at the capacity to organize a large fundraising effort, don't know where we're going to find that in the midst of everything else we're trying to do to keep the, the plane flying. And so, that kinda lets us sit there, talk to the PTO, and the PTO says, you know, we've kinda got our mission, and that's really working, and to take this on would severely detract from where we're going, not that they wouldn't be supportive and say, you know, well, we could find five K, we could find, you know, we'll, we'll support you, and, but we don't wanna take this on either, it's not really-
Should, should this be part of the facilities plan?
Something I thought in the back of my head.
Financially-
Along with parking and the-
Financially, the timing doesn't work, if you, if you wanna have, if you wanna have-
It's not gonna wait, it's, you can't wait.
I think next summer is really when, according to Dave, that we're going to, we're gonna need to address it, otherwise, we're gonna have so much of that closed that it's not going to be able to support, you know, a hundred and fifty kids going out to recess. Plus, he's worried about next summer, 'cause summertime is the time when we don't necessarily have a lot of control over it, but there's a lot of traffic there, you start getting the false, and some of his biggest use is that September, October fall season on Saturdays.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
So, one thing, Alan, I, I was looking at it the other day when I was there, and it seems, you know, just from a walk-by, that the metal components are in-
Yeah.
-okay shape, I mean, as Dave looked at, you know, basically stripping the metal components and, you know, having those refurbished, and then, you know, replacing just the wood components, it just seems like a hundred thousand dollar is a lot of money.
Yeah.
And, you know, it seems like the components that are there are well-used, and people like the variety, if we could just replace the wood structure.
I think it's kind of like trying to refurb a sixty-eight firebird with stuff from this century, I think that if you go around to new schools, they, they just don't make those type of play structures anymore.
Well, it's like the old dragon big plus.
They make the ones that are all metal, they're all metal pylons, and, and I, you know, could you-
That's what you see.
Could you design some, could you find someone who would design something? You probably could, and, but the whole thing is the certification that has to come with it, which-
The other, the other piece with the metal is you just get a great, a significant longer lifespan. I mean, the wood comes with a fifteen to twenty-year lifespan, which is what, you know, by the time we-
Oh, my God.
We, we got it.
Yeah.
I mean, they're, they're saying these, it's kinda like a thirty-year roof, you're gonna get thirty years.
You know, the other thing that made me think about it, I went to, uh, the park on Essex a couple of weeks ago with my kids, because there's, they have a bike trail, I don't know if anybody's been there, uh, what's it called, pump track?
Yeah.
And, you, you know, I just wondered what, um, the rec department has going across the street, because if you go and see the use that's going on at that park between the skateboard ramps, the pump track, it's a loop track, it's a kind of a dirt mountain bike, BMX loops.
It's a loop, it's a loop track that has ups and downs, and it's designed so that you don't pedal, you have to move your bike and shift your weight to get over all the obstacles.
I guess I wasn't shifting my weight correctly, then. I found the need to pedal a little bit.
Skill, it's a skill, so.
But, I mean, it, I, I was just thinking, if we're gonna replace this kinda stuff, are we replacing it with stuff that kids wanna use going forward?
Yeah, I mean, 'cause this, this came to us two days after the fool's flop, after some, you know, folks in the town donated twenty-six hundred dollars to build a playground in Davis Park.
Right, which is-
Of which they spent a thousand dollars on t-shirts, so, they netted out sixteen hundred dollars, but, um, so, I asked the question a few times, and it's like, it's difficult, because even in a small sample size, there's like fundraising fatigue, like on another playground, so, y- you know, you mentioned that, did you say you don't own that land, or the town owns the land just out, just outside of that?
The town maintains the land outside of the sidewalk there, which is on the other side of the playground, we're responsible for the playground.
Okay, so it's not something where we could ask the town to-
No.
-take something and put a playground in there?
No.
So, I mean, that's what concerns me, is like, trying to raise money for that playground, and we get twenty-six hundred dollars, and now we need a hundred thousand dollars, how are we gonna do that?
Clearly, there's gonna be a, I mean, there's a huge fundraising effort underway for the turf fields, or the curriculum fields, as Joan told me I'm supposed to call them.
Curriculum fields?
Yes, for, to support the wellness curriculum.
Oh, yeah, you know, they're, they're, they're trying to raise two point six million dollars for that, um, arguably-
Are they gonna do the turf fields for the cross-country team as well, like the little loop that goes through the?
Nope.
No, they're not doing that?
Nope. No, they're, they're looking at where, actually, one of them won't be in the football, won't be the current football field, uh, that I guess the track dimensions are such that you can't do a multi-purpose all turf field within those dimensions, yeah, 'cause it, it's not, it's not wide enough to get like lacrosse or soccer fields, or something like that.
Okay.
Uh, so, one of them will be where at least, I, I know Girls Lacrosse plays their games there, I don't know if Boys does on the same field, and then there's another one just kinda off to the side of that, that that's where the, the plan is, but, um, you know, I, I don't know, a- and it's on here as a, as a report to the board, at some point, we're gonna have to figure out how to go forward with this, um, uh, you know, it's still, a hundred grand is a lot of money, but compared to two point six million, um, and granted, we're only raising it from one, we would only be raising it from one town instead of four, uh, but, you know, it, it's somewhat of a di- different constituency than is gonna be hit up for the two point six million.
Because one actually has to do with a full community's developmental wellness, and one has to do with a small portion of the school's developmental sports, so.
So, anyhow, so, I, I think we can, um, I don't know, maybe we take this up again at, um, at the retreat or whatever, I, I still would like to figure out some way that we're not-
I, I think we've got, we've got a plan.
Yes, we have.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and I, and I get that you guys need another major project on your place, like you need a hole in the head, um, and, and you know, that in the scheme, you know, where, where does this fall in, in the priority list of, of things that have to get done, so.
I mean, I think if we're gonna raise money, I don't think it is the administration's duty to run a fundraiser, I think that's gotta be a community.
No, but, yeah, how, how do we find people who are willing to do that?
Raise that, yeah.
And, you know, it, it is the, um, you know, the people trying to do this for, for CVU, um, it's not the administration that's doing it, I mean, it's a bunch of people who want turf fields, who are, uh, and, and who are putting that all together, so. Alright, so let's move on to discussion matters, the first is six point one, uh, policy review, and I guess these are policies that, if anybody has any, uh, feedback on for the next policy committee meeting, now's your opportunity to, uh, to give that feedback, and, uh, Dave will take that back to the committee, and, uh, it'll either be acted upon or not, and then the consensus of the committee, and Dave's persuasiveness.
Absolutely.
Dave, anything on, on any of these policies that you wanna call out to us or point out to us?
You know, a lot of the, the way these policies are, there's six here, five of them were reviews of heavily mandated policies from the federal government, there's one here that is not, job sharing, and, um, it was interesting in the sense of, in the discussion of the policy, it leaves a lot of, um, decision-making up to the administration and judgment, and it really, in the conversation we had about it, like, each member of the board that had administrative responsibilities had strong opinions one way or the other, and it sort of made, made the policy seem sort of difficult to use, but, that was just my interpretation, I mean, it's still, the end decision is the administration will either give a recommendation or not, so I think it, it probably still works, but, um, it's just, that was my observation, but everything else is very, sort of, like, on the other side.
And the takeaway that I had from the job-sharing policy was, um, and I know I had asked this question, uh, when we were taking it up, is, you know, do we really need to do this every year, does it need to be done annually, and apparently, it was a consensus on the, a strong consensus on the policy committee, that yes, it should continue to be an annually approved item, so.
Yep.
Anybody have, else have any questions or, or input for, for Dave on these policies?
No.
Next is, um, six point two, which is Act one fifty-three, student support services consolidation, so, uh, let me, I'll give this a shot, and Megan or, or Bob and Kathy jump in if you think I'm, I'm missing anything or misstating anything. Act one fifty-three mandates that, uh, everything with special education all be, uh, basically consolidated at the supervisory union level, uh, so that, um, you know, the special ed directors in each building, assuming we continue to have special ed directors in each building, which my understanding is we like that model, as opposed to having a couple of assistant directors, you know, reporting to Megan, but at the supervisory union, um, but that those, those people report into, into Megan, and also the budget reports into Megan or into, into the supervisory union, and the discussion at the, uh, at the SU meeting was, how will those expenses get allocated back out to the schools, and, and there are two possibilities, one is, um, purchase services, which is the model we have for transportation, you use the buses a certain amount, you pay for that, um, a- and, you know, you're not doing it based on head counts, um, the other is to do it based on ADM, or average daily membership, um, and to allocate it back out to the schools that way, I, I think that the, um, well, certainly Elaine's position is that she would prefer that it be done based on ADM, and, and I think the biggest, um, benefit to that is that our, our year-to-year expenses for that are likely to be more, more predictable, in that, uh, you know, in a small population size, you can have, uh, big swings from, from year to year in the expenses, if you have one or two kids that are very high needs, uh, that come in or leave, uh, you can have fifty, a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you know, in big swings, uh, just from a, a relatively small number of students. If it's done on, you know, if it's allocated based out on, on ADM, the theory is, is that, well, if, if, you know, if Shelburne is having a really tough year with, with several kids added, well, Williston might have several kids leave, maybe they move from Williston to Shelburne, um, so that, you know, again, i- it's going to kinda smooth out some of the, the volatility of those, uh, of those expenses on a year-to-year basis, and, um, and, and make that budget even more predictable. Certainly, it, uh, relieves the administration of significant amounts of work, uh, just building those costs up, or, you know, and then, and then, you know, basically breaking them back all down to, to build them back out to the schools. This will come to a vote, uh, I'm not sure if it's gonna be at next, the next SU meeting, or whether it will be in the fall, but it will come to a vote by the supervisory union on how we're going to do this, and I, I asked, you know, specifically, so if Shelburne decided, if we, you know, if our consensus, 'cause there's no reason for us to have a vote on it, um, because it is a supervisory union level decision based on the legislation, but if all five of us said, we really want it to be the purchase services model, and we get into the supervisory union vote, and it's thirteen to three, that Bob, Kathy and I all vote for purchase services, and, and the rest of the board votes for, uh, the ADM model, that's what it's gonna be, a- and there's no opportunity for us to opt out, because it's state law that says this is how it's gonna be done. So, that being said, uh, we at least want to, you know, have an idea of what, you know, I mean, and, Tim and Dave, what, what your thoughts are on it, and whether you have any questions on it, um, so that when we, when we go back and do vote, uh, you know, we can try to represent the Shelburne's position on it.
Question about clarification, did you say that the state has mandated that it be alloc, the cost be allocated as ADM?
No, the state gives you the option-
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
-to do it either way, but, but, but the state has mandated, one, is just that it's all being done now at the supervisory union level-
Right.
-and that it is an SU decision, that it's not a local decision to decide how we wanna get billed for it.
Okay.
That, that, you know, like I say- That, that, you know, like I say, doesn't matter what we think, if we're not in the majority on the supervisory union vote.
I mean, my feeling is that, you know, purchase services is probably the most equitable way to allocate the expense, but if it creates a accounting nightmare, or a lot of overhead to calculate that, um, you know, then it may not be worth it, but I think, you know, if you do it like the buses, if you got a bus that goes a thousand miles a week and one that goes two hundred miles a week, I wouldn't wanna average it and pay five hundred miles a week.
One of, one of the things that Elaine also highlighted, that I think is important to, to the conversation, is that, um, so purchase services is pretty much what happens now, it's, it's you, you build your budget and you own your expenses and your revenue, and what happens in a consolidated system is this, um, notion of, of leverage about our cost practices, so, you know, when we analyze as a system, expenses across the SU for special ed, they're different, um, and that the, all of our work around trying to become more unified, more consistent, um, you know, clearly, our primary concern is consistency because of equity for what kind of services kids get, but there's financial implications to that as well, so when you continue our current model, you have less leverage to say, why is this school spending more than this school? Consolidation and billing back by ADM gives folks real reason to say, well, let's look at why we are so different and how do we bring ourselves together. The other piece that, um, that is just important to know is that one of the perceived benefits of consolidation from the state, you know, one of the rationales for doing it is that you'd have flexibility in using resources, so if you have a particular type of expertise or a particular staff member in one school, right now, we can't share that unless, unless the person was to resign and, and be hired in another position. If we maintain a purchase service model, that'll still be the case, we won't be able to share expertise.
Really? Cause, okay, I, I mean, I, I thought they would be, um, SU employees regardless.
They would, but you would, so, but if you are.
I, I, I guess I, I would, I'm sorry, I, I would assume that, um, if it was being used point four in our building and point six in Charlotte, that you could still, you know, parcel that out on a purchase service model.
On a year-to-year basis.
It would, it would be a pain in the neck.
You'd have to do it on a year-to-year basis, and you'd have to build it into your budget, which is why it would essentially not be any different, it might be a little bit easier in that I now would have the authority to move that person as opposed to them wanting to have it.
These are the, these are the support staff that have licenses.
Yes.
The ones that don't have license are assigned to the building, or?
The most recent, I mean, that, more than likely, the law is going to reflect just professional staff, that's still a bit of a moving target, but that was recommendation that came out of this most recent session, that, um, it, it's very clear that professionals, administrators, teachers, SLPs, anyone with a license would move, and there's conversation that would keep paraprofessionals at the, at the building level. So, you, you would lose the nimbleness mid-year. That, that you potentially could have in a consolidated system, um, but, you know, but again, there's, there's op, there's operational pros and cons to both, and there's educational pros and cons to both.
And, and, you know, at least in the short term, uh, if we go to the ADM model, there are, there are winners and losers amongst the, the five school districts, including CVU, um, because some right now spend more on it than, you know, more per pupil than others, and, you know, Megan said, I mean, one, one of the reasons is, to do this, is, you know, the supervisory union starts, starts to have some leverage on the individual buildings or the individual districts and say, okay, um, these three schools are all doing it more cost-efficiently than these two schools, so we're going to adopt the practices from the three and the two, but you don't get there in year one, and so that doing it by ADM, those schools who have been spending more are actually going to be spending less, uh, to get there, and the schools that have been doing it more cost-effectively arguably, um, will be spending more in the short term if we move to this model. Now, at the, the board chair meeting we had on Monday, um, we did ask to have more information to be able to, you know, to make these decisions, um, one of them was, you know, one, one of the things we're looking for is, uh, you know, a five or six-year history, so that we can kinda see, you know, what are the swings year to year, so, you know, this theory that, you know, it'll smooth that out, well, what does that really look like, and what, what are the practical implications of that? A- and I think also understanding, you know, short-term, who are the winners and losers of this going to be, uh, and, and, you know, how badly, if, if we were one of the losers, uh, you know, how, what's the pain from that? You know, what, what would it be, all things being equal, is, is this an extra hundred grand to our budget, an extra thirty grand to our budget, I mean, a thirty grand's not such a big deal, uh, you know, multiply that four or five times, and suddenly, you're talking, you know, a lot of money, so, yeah.
I heard about what Elaine said about the efficiency of the services and how there's appear to be differences in the cost-effectiveness with which those services are delivered from building to building. But, um, how do you separate that from the fa, the, the fact that, or how do you establish that when there's the reality of it is that your budget can swing up two hundred thousand dollars a year because some new kids have moved into the.
Right.
The school district?
Right.
How, I don't understand how that, that evaluation was made.
Because it has, that's true, but I would, I think that when, when we look at the really efficient systems and that, that implies that some are not efficient, and I, I don't know that I'd go that far, but the differences are not just related to swings and students, it's really more related to overall model, sort of service delivery model, how many staff you have, how you use those staff, and things like that, so the, the differences are, are less related to those unpredictable fluctuations that are going to happen and could happen to anyone.
Right.
But they're more consistent around, um, your model and for, or a school's individual model.
So, we're really spreading the risk that some students might move into our district that have special needs?
Yes.
Is, I mean, do we have an efficient service delivery model in Shelburne?
So, part of the more detailed numbers are, are part of.
We, we were hoping you'd immediately say, yes!
Yes, so the answer is yes, but I say that cautiously because remember, as, as Russ described, the more efficient systems are the ones that will hurt more the first time you move to this.
Cause we'll be assuming a share of the inefficiencies of other.
Until, until they're able to work those through the system, uh, so, cup, couple, one, one, one other comment I'd like to make, or topic I'd like to, to touch on, and then a question, um, because at least initially, the, the thought is that this would only, um, include licensed staff, and paras would remain at the building level, if somebody has a model that is, you know, kinda more weighted towards paras, um, versus one that is light on paras, that will have implications on this, and hopefully, we can get a better understanding of what, what that looks like, a- and, and part of it goes to the issue of how paras are used, um, because they get broken up into, into, you know, fractional people, uh, they might be used, some piece of it is a, a special ed expense, some piece of a paras time, and, and some piece of a, um, paras time might be for general education that it's not specific to, um, to special education, and, and then my question is, um, you know, again, assuming, just like we're ascending town when it comes to the state education fund, uh, assuming Shelburne, we're, you know, we're gonna, gonna be ascending town initially in this, um, is it possible to say, well, you know, we're gonna have the first two years of this, we're gonna do as purchase services, uh, until you're wringing out of, um, you know, wring the efficiencies out of, out of the other schools, and then switch to a, um, and then switch to an, uh, you know, an ADM model? And I don't know what, you know, if the law says, you know, make your decision now and forever holds your peace, or if, if, you know, something like this, uh, could be done, which, you know, depending on how many schools are, are gonna be descending schools in this, it, it might, you know, might impact the vote.
It's a good question, and I thought of the same question when we were talking about at the SC board, and it's one I don't know the answer to, but I think we need to investigate that, when, you know, is there a possibility of saying, we recognize that ultimately, we maximize the, the positives of consolidation by, by assessing back by ADM, but we're concerned about the initial, is there a transition phase? So, I think that's a worthy question to ask.
Yep.
Um, and the other thing, too, that I would think is going to require discussion, so this issue of paras staying at the building is relatively new, it came out of the work group that the state convened just about a month and a half ago, is when that report came out, one of the things that we have to caution ourselves about related to that is, um, so people who have a heavy para service delivery model, lighter on the profess, professionals, would in theory have a less, you know, less of an allocation from the SU, because they're using less of the SU pub, but everything that we are studying and learning, and what we know about what's effective, is that we shouldn't have a, have a service delivery model that's heavy on the paras, so I would want us to be really careful about drawing a parallel between, um, what you could gain by having a lot of paras in your building and taking less professionals, because I think then your message is, is becoming, we can lower our special ed costs by using more paras and less professionals, and that, and I, and I don't think that that's what you're implying.
No, no.
But I think it's, it's something that we have to be really careful about in our mess.
No, my, my, my point in bringing that up is just that it impacts however you choose to allocate the expenses, uh, again, if there are winners and losers in that allocation, at least initially, that will be one of the things that impacts how, how a school perceives itself in, in that game.
One quick question, you mentioned sending and receiving schools, but this isn't a statewide thing, it's only sending and receiving within the SU.
Within the SU.
Okay, alright.
Any?
Big fly. He's raised in chemistry class.
What's that?
Raised in chemistry class.
Pretty worried what I turn into. Alright, so any other questions or any other discussion on, on that topic? So, next is, is Communication Board's Corners, um, Bob, did that one hit?
I sent it in.
Sent it in, so that should be tomorrow's paper?
Yeah, it should get distributed tomorrow, uh, tomorrow, right?
And, uh, are you still working on one?
Still working on one, I told Bob, I said, I didn't finish my homework, so I was gonna get in trouble with it.
Good to stay after.
I got one for the team, Dave, I, I bought you some time.
Appreciate it, and I gave you the hard time and got you that assignment, and then I didn't do mine. So, I apologize.
Anything else that anybody thinks we need to do between now and the next, um, any communication we wanna make, certainly, you know, saw the article on the, um, the green, uh, green ribboned school.
Congratulations.
So, you know, no need to do a board corner on that, but that was a nice piece that,
Yeah.
Didn't even use it on the papers, so that's good, good to get that, uh, so, unless anybody's jumping at the bit to do one, we'll, we'll, we'll move on to action items.
Always.
Next is seven point one point one, approval authority, and what we're, we're talking about here, I had a conversation with Alan and Patty this afternoon, and this, I think, was, um, recommended to them by Cindy, or, or conversation that they had with Cindy, but that's, um, wanting to have a way to get, um, positions approved without having to wait to the next board meeting, so that they can make offers to people, you know, make official offers to people, uh, it, it's really what we do each year, uh, you know, our, our last business meeting of the year, which is usually sometime in June, where the board chair, in this case, me, is delegated the authority to be able to, uh, approve the hirings, and then we, you know, do a blanket approval of them when, when we meet in September, uh, so this would just kind of, uh, enable me to, to do that, uh, between meetings, because there are, uh, is, you know, Patty and Alan have, have indicated on this, um, uh, on this, on this page here, um, you know, either, a couple of them, we've got final candidates, uh, one of them, we got a final candidate, uh, one of them, we've got two finalists, and we'd like to be able to move quickly, or they'd like to be able to move quickly on making the offers and getting these positions squared away, uh, so, what I would be looking for here, and please help me with the language of this, but that, um, a- and if somebody else wants to have this authority, we can make it down, but that somebody is given the authority to act on behalf of the board in, um, in approving these contracts or approving the offers to, to these employees, so if it should be the board chair, or, you know, if you guys don't wanna do it, I'm happy to, um, but we need a motion to that effect.
Question, the Director of Student Services is licensed, part of the supervisory union.
Oh, okay, so it's like.
Will be.
Will be, we have one more year.
Oh, it's not there yet?
Not yet, oh, okay, I'm sorry, right.
Extra credit for flagging that, though. That's good stuff.
You're just trying to butter him up because of the board, because of the board corner thing. So, can we get a motion then to, um, delegate that authority to the board chair to give interim approval?
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries on that one. Uh, the next item that we had was seven point one point two, and this was a request by, uh, Alan and Patty to make the literacy coordinator position a full one point O FTE for the coming school year, uh, it, it's only a one-year deal, and again, step in if I miss any of the background on this, but, um, Carol Kavanaugh, who we recently approved the leave of absence for the coming school year for, is a point eight employee. They have identified a candidate that they would like to make an offer to for this, who is on our current staff, um, and so there, there are a number of reasons why they would like to make this a point two, I, I'm sorry, to make it a full one point O for the coming year, and, and this does not bind us towards anything beyond the one year, um, one, there are a number of things going on, and I'll let you guys speak to, to what that is, why they think they really could use that person to, you know, to be a full position as opposed to a point eight for the coming year, uh, but there are also some contractual issues that if this person takes it as a point eight, then they sort of lose their re-entry rights, if you will, to get a full one point O position when the, the new school year comes around, uh, and, you know, it, it will, it will create some logistical issues and, and some, you know, seniority issues and that kind of thing, that, uh, may make the person that they would like to offer the job too hesitant to accept it. Alan and Patty did tell me, you know, that, that the two finalists for this were both internal candidates, people who wanted to do it at least for the one year, um, and they really wanted to be an internal candidate, um, because it is something that will be a lot easier for an internal person to get up and running with this position than somebody brand-new who doesn't know our staff and doesn't know our systems, and very likely will only be in the position for one year, uh, and especially if it's only a point eight position and they come from outside, they're really only gonna be a point five or a point six position for the first few months is, just as they get up to speed on everything, so, um, it certainly makes sense to have it be an internal candidate, uh, if you would speak to, um, where you've envisioned the money coming from, cause you really see this as being budget-neutral.
Right.
Uh, if you will, and again, that it would only be applicable for the position for this year, future, we may wanna have a discussion, maybe we want it to be a one point O forever, uh, but we don't have to have that discussion, that, that this would only affect this year.
And can you also mention whether or not the person who might go into this position would then have to be backfilled, their position would have to be backfilled?
So, yes, so the answer to that question is that if we made that move that we're asking, that person's position would have to be covered, so we'd have to hire a person for that position for, again, one year.
So, is that a looping position?
It would not affect a looping situation, that either of these candidates would not affect a looping situation, okay, so, so that's the good news, but yes, Kathy, you're right, that, that we would then have to have another hire, hence, one of the reasons why we're asking to move on this so quickly is because we need to do this in order to, you know, it's the domino game, so, um, and as far as where the monies would come from, we would like to use our Medicaid money, which we. which we do have money in our Medicaid fund for that .2 FTE. I, my assumption would be that the employee would get, you know, two separate contracts, one for the .2 and then one for the .8. And as Russ just said, it would not be any, you know, there would not be any budget implication. You know, one of the things that we talked about a lot was not only the fact that it's from an efficiency standpoint for kids, it's so important to have somebody who's in the building so they know the programs, they know the students, they know the teachers. But it is a leadership position, so it's really important for us to also draw from within those teachers who are really capable of stepping up into our leadership roles. So, that would be one of the draws to have this person in that position. Molly did a great job, you know, going through all the criteria for the literacy coordinator. I don't know if you care to hear that, but, you know, they, they have a huge job. Both our math coordinator and our literacy jobs are just huge. And when you put, as, as we talked about earlier, our responsibilities toward our school improvement plan and with a new director of student services, I just really, I mean, we've talked about it extensively and I think Alan and I believe that it, it's, it's going to be a lot of work to get all that done and make sure that our children get the intervention programs that we've paid for, a lot of those programs, and we need to implement quickly so that we make sure they don't lose time as they come in.
So, what I'd like to do is get a motion to approve the literacy coordinator becoming a full 1.0 FTE for the 2013, 2014 school year, then we can have further discussion if need be and then vote on that. So, can we get a motion to?
So moved.
And do we have a second?
Second.
So, any further discussion or questions for the administration?
What's the Medicaid money?
So, Medicaid money is money that's...
Can I get some of this?
I know, really. Because of certain, do you want to actually talk to where it comes from because you probably know better than I do?
So, Medicaid dollars are drawn down for primarily students with disabilities, but who are eligible for Medicaid and so schools are allowed to bill for certain allowable services that are health-related essentially. And so, every building has a Medicaid clerk, they have a, you know, list of kids who are eligible for Medicaid and we bill for the services that we provide to them and we get federal dollars back. And those federal dollars, there's parameters around how you can use them, but they, you know, in general, it's about improving the, you know, sort of well-being of, of your greater population. The, the focus of the .2 on...
On AYP.
AYP and improving progress fits into that realm. So, that's where the Medicaid dollars come from.
So, are you saying that this, the .2 would be new Medicaid dollars coming in?
No, they would be, you'd be reused, you, you have a pot of Medicaid dollars and, and they would just be, Patty and Alan would be just shifting how they use those Medicaid dollars.
Just a reallocation of the monies that we currently have.
Correct.
And we have some money sitting there that we haven't allocated just because of the way this, this amount is kind of, you know, the money kind of comes in and then it leaves for certain things, but the money, you don't have to spend it all in one calendar year or one, you know, so that money can accumulate. So, sometimes depending upon what you need for, for students or whatnot.
And it's a consistent, relatively consistent amount of money. I mean, it doesn't change, it doesn't change a whole lot.
So, there's some sort of fund balance in the Medicaid account now?
Yes, there is. And you can't supplement, I, I mean, you, you can't supplant anything that you currently do with your budget. You can only supplement. So, it has to be something that's kind of on top of a new program or, or, or something of that.
I mean, how much money is in that fund now?
I'd have, I mean...
Rough, I mean... Last FMR, about $160,000.
Yeah, it's bigger than that, yeah.
And how much would we collect in a year typically? I mean, is that over?
That's roughly, well, yeah, we've got a structure set up where we can only spend last year's money.
Yep.
So, the funding is in, so we monitor it this year. It seems to be fairly consistent in the 150, 170 range.
Maybe it's a relatively substantial amount in the scheme of things.
Is this part of our general fund balance?
No, it's kept as an independent pool of money and we treat it as, so the expenditure will show on, on our expenses sheet and then this is treated as revenue from outside. So, it really comes in our revenue. So, sometimes when you see fluctuations in our revenues, it's due to the unpredictability in some cases of Medicaid or special ed reimbursement.
So, you don't realize the income until you spend it then? Is that accurate?
Um, kind of.
I mean, it does sit in this account.
So, you don't have a balance sheet?
We don't have to.
This is a balance sheet.
It literally sits in this account, if you will, and then you draw off that account.
Yes, there's a lot of paperwork involved. That's why you have a, you have a clerk who takes care of that and the Medicaid funds fund your clerk, so.
But we don't get dollar for dollar, do we? We don't get 50% or something like that?
This is, this is different. This is, this is like, like billing fee for service. So, there is, so in the Medicaid world, there's a certain amount of money you can charge for case management, there's a certain amount of money you charge for personal care that's provided to students, a certain amount of money you charge for evaluations and, and you, and our Medicaid clerk, for all kids who are eligible, there's a lot of paperwork involved with logging it and documenting it and then they, they are drawing down funds. So, it's not a reimbursement issue, it's a...
Yeah, I was gonna, I, I think that, you know, the reimbursement thing where it's, you know, 52% or, you know, whatever that we, we typically average, that's tied back more directly student-specific, if I understand it correctly, where this is not student, student-specific. So, it's different rules, is that...
Well, it's, it's still tied to a student, it's still student-specific, but it's me, it's medical, it's more medical.
Correct.
But are, okay, so, but the, the, the funds that are gonna pay for this .2 out of the Medicaid...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Is, I, I don't think we're having to say, well, this piece of that .2 is this child and this piece is that child. So, that's where that reimbursement comes in, that, you know, your, your favorite pet pee, not the 100% that the federal government tells us to spend and then never gives us the money.
Right, unfunded mandate.
Yeah.
How you generate the money is student-specific, how you have to spend the money is definitely not, it actually can't be.
The opposite, right, it has to be.
So, so that's why it's not that same, you know, we're only gonna get funded for 52% of the .2 because it's not tied to specifics.
He has a pulse on you, I think. It's very complicated.
It, it sure is.
It's the government. So, any other further questions or discussion?
No.
No?
Sure.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
And then the last one is 7.1.3 and this is to do a triple E hire. Do I have things out? Do I have enough here?
Do you have, Kathy? Yeah. I'll be excited.
You have enough there?
Uh, yeah, thanks.
Thank you. So, this is to hire Shelley Henson as a .8 FTE for a triple E position. So, any, actually, can I get a motion to approve the hire?
So moved.
Any questions for the discussion?
So, the triple E teacher who's there now is leaving, I mean, she's only been there one year, right?
Yes.
Correct.
So, it's just not a renewal of her contract?
She's leaving.
Yeah.
She's chosen to leave.
Okay. Actually, I didn't get a second. Do we get a second on that?
Second.
Now any more questions or, or discussion? Okay, so can we get a vote on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Do you want these back? Or not necessary? It's not executive session.
That's probably...
Yeah, that's, that's fine, she said.
Okay.
Okay, so next is the, the consent agenda. So, can we get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And then the last is just confirming our next meeting dates and as Kathy noticed, the retreat is not in here.
Retreat's the 31st.
Yes, it is.
The 31st?
And we'd like everybody to be there, so make sure we note that May 31st.
Nine to four.
I thought it was eight 30 to four, eight to four, I don't know.
I think I'm wrong every time I say that.
I think it's eight to four.
Eight to four.
Yeah, Cindy's gonna send an email out. The morning will be the local meetings and the afternoon will be the supervisory union meeting. And certainly, everybody's welcome to stay for lunch. And that's going to be at the, what do we say, the Comfort Inn or something like that?
Sunset Ballroom at the Comfort Inn on Shelburne Road.
That's May 31st?
May 31st, Friday.
You're right, eight, eight until four. Is that going to be right up on the right-hand side?
Yeah, right before you hit the car dealers, I think it's like a big group of hotels. So, with that, we do not need the executive session, so we got a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And we're out of here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.